Good evening, and welcome to the Jersey City zoning board of adjustment. This is our regularly scheduled meeting for June ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. It's a little after six thirty P M. This meeting is conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Senator Byron M. Bear Open Publix Meeting Act, which permits a public body to conduct a meeting electronically during a state of emergency. You'll hear more from staff, but notice of this meeting was shared in a variety of locations to make sure that people had awareness of the meeting. Let's get started with a call to order and pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, great. Staff. Any sunshine announcements?
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this hearing was given to the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, El Especialito, and posted with the clerk, and we have the notices to be marked.
And that will be B one for tonight's meeting, notices marked.
Thank you. Can you please take roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Shadid.
Aye.
Commissioner Donnelly.
Here.
And Chairman Jacobs.
Here.
We have five presents.
Thank you. Can you swear on staff, please?
You swear or affirm the testimony or comments you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're not going to conduct the reorganization at this meeting. Any old business?
Uh, no.
Any adjournments?
Yes, as listed on the agenda, eight A case C twenty-one hundred is carried to the June twenty-third regular meeting with preservation of notice. Or actually, I'm sorry. They are renoticing for the June twenty-third meeting, that's two sixteen Palisade. So they were listed on this agenda, but they will be renoticing for the June twenty-third regular meeting. Item ten, case Z twenty seventy-seven. That's the first item listed under new business, that's one sixty-three to one sixty-five Delaware Avenue. That is carried to the June twenty-third regular meeting with preservation of notice. Same for the next item, item eleven, case C twenty-one ninety-five, address seventy Gardner, also carried to the June twenty-third regular meeting with preservation of notice. The, the next item, twelve, case C twenty-one seventy-two, that's two oh three Danforth Avenue. I do see that a council is on the line for that, so I'm going to promote Jim Burke because I didn't receive a formal email saying that they're going to carry, so I'm gonna promote him, if that's all right?
Yes.
All right.
And while you're promoting him, what about item thirteen, case Z twenty-two dash zero zero one?
Yeah, that is thirty-four Randolph Ave that is proceeding tonight.
Okay, so we're gonna talk to Mr. Burke about two oh three Danforth and get an understanding of that status, may or may not go forward today. And then we're hearing definitively one case, case Z twenty-two dash zero zero one, which is thirty-four Randall Ave, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Chairman, am I on?
Yes, I see you, hear you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
One second, one second, sorry, sorry. Okay, all right, Jim, go ahead.
Okay, um, yes, we're appearing tonight, we understand, we have a D variant, so we are making the request to be carried. We did submit proof of notice, and I would just ask that notice is preserved and we, we identify a date certain so that we can move to that date versus tonight.
Great, we are carrying it to June twenty-third, is that right, Lindsay?
That is the next regular meeting, so, yep. With preservation of notice.
Correct. All right, that's it for us, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. So with that, we'll proceed with case Z twenty-two dash zero zero one. The address is thirty-four Randolph Ave.
Chairman?
Yes.
Can we hold up one second? We've lost Bridget.
Oh.
Bridget has just had a little computer problem.
Yes.
She called, I was wondering why she was calling me, but then I don't.
Okay, I'll get that, Lindsay, okay, and put that in from you, okay?
Yep, it was recording at that time, so.
Okay, thanks, sorry.
No problem.
Okay, then, if you want to just call this where we're at now, I don't know.
We are starting, we're gonna proceed with case Z twenty-two dash zero zero one. The address is thirty-four Randolph Ave.
So Mr. Pizzillo, before you start, uh, this is a notice case. We have your notices, your affidavit, proof of service, notice of publication. So Bridget, we're gonna mark that as a one for this application.
Okay, that would be a one in evidence.
Thank you, counsel, and, and good evening, Chairman, good evening, Commissioners, I appreciate your time. My name is Gerard Pizzillo, I'm an attorney with Genova Burns. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, I T one O one LLC Rich, please stop sharing your screen. We are here tonight requesting two C variances. The property thirty-four Randolph Ave, it's block two-three seven oh three, lot eleven, and it's in the R one zone. It's currently a vacant, slightly undersized lot, two thousand four hundred and thirty-eight square feet. We are proposing a zone compliant two-family home, which includes two three-bedroom duplex units, as well as some other streetscape improvements. Because this is a, the, the total project area is less than five thousand square feet, so it does not trigger minor site plan approval requirements. So that's why we're not asking for a site plan approval. We are asking for two variances because of the irregularity of the lot. It is a corner lot along Randolph and Myrtle, and we aren't able to meet the R one front and rear yard setback requirements. So that is the project and the proposal before you. So again, the use is compliant, the height is compliant, the density is compliant. There is no site plan approval request, or rather, just relief from the front and rear yard setback requirements. I have a, uh, three very brief witnesses, uh, just to give the board the lay of the land and show the board what exactly the project will be. Uh, and my witnesses will be Mark Chisvet from Chisvet Engineering, Richard Garber from Grow Architects, who will testify to the show you the building and the requested setbacks. And then Catherine Gregory from Catherine Gregory and Associates, who is our professional planner, and she will put the proofs before the board to justify the, the relief that we're requesting. Finally, I, before I turn it over to them, I just would like to point out that we worked and the applicant and the team worked very hard with planning, and more importantly, the, the local community to develop this project in a way that would be approved and supported by them. There were several iterations that went back as far as two thousand and eighteen. And, you know, there were some issues from both staff level as well as the community level that we went back to the drawing board and, and came up with this project. So we did meet with the community on the, on the, the, the project that we're presenting this evening, and we did receive their support. So I don't know if anyone from the community is out there, but I just wanted to put that on the record. So, all that being said, uh, Mark Chisvet from Chisvet Engineering will just briefly describe the site and the proposed site condition, so Mark.
Would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony or abouts given this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And if you could state and spell your name for the record?
Mark, M A R K, Chisvet, C H I S V E T T E, with Chisvet Engineering.
Thank you.
Okay, Mark, uh, very briefly, if you just want to run the board through the site and the proposed site conditions.
Sure, I'll share my screen.
Certainly try to share your screen, I think, Mr. Chisvet, you've been before the board before your license is current and you are licensed in the state of New Jersey, right?
Yes, it's still current, yes.
We accept your qualifications, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
All right, so let me start with the, the site plan. This, you should be, you should be looking at drawing C O O one, which is our, our site plan. This property is at the southeast corner of Randolph Ave and Myrtle Ave. Uh, on this plan, north is up, Randolph is to the left, Myrtle is at the top of the page. The property is kind of a trapezoidal in shape, it's fairly small, it's only two thousand four hundred and eighty-eight square feet. The frontage on Randolph is, is not even twenty-nine feet, it's twenty-eight point nine five. The frontage along Myrtle Ave was sixty-seven thirty-three. There's a sideline off of Randolph that's sixty-five point one-two feet and a, what is the sideline off of Myrtle, actually, it's the lot line off of Myrtle, which is actually the rear, in this case, the rear lot line is forty-eight point seven-two feet. The project is, is, uh, the property is currently vacant, it is not in any flood zone. It is in a combined sewer area of, of the city. The, the proposed building, uh, as you see, uh, at the ground level, there will be a it's sort of L-shaped, if you can call it that, it would, there will be al- almost no setback, it's a, it's six inches, more or less at, along Randolph Ave and along Myrtle, it's, it's, uh, point three feet or just about four inches. There is, uh, there is a, uh, three-foot setback along the sideline, which is the line off of Randolph Ave, but then that opens up, there's a rear yard and a proposed patio, so that opens up, and the width at that point where it opens up is twenty-point eight-six feet wide. And then along the rear of the property, there's a two-foot setback. But it, again, as it opens up, it is thirty-three point three feet at this, at, where this rectangular rear yard is at the corner of the property. We're proposing a grass strip and planter strip along the property lines and a pervious type, a paver patio in that rear yard. I'm going to, well, well, before I move to the next page, the streetscape, we're proposing new curb and sidewalk along both frontages, uh, new handicap ramps to line up with the existing crosswalks, there is now a crosswalk long Myrtle. Kind of at, in the middle of, of our site, but it's at the corner, it wasn't across the street. And another, uh, crosswalk on Randolph Ave. We are proposing one, uh, tree-pit street tree on Randolph Ave. It is a tight site, we would have liked to have put more trees along Myrtle Ave, but there's a gas line that runs just behind that curb, so we wouldn't be able to plant any trees, and sidewalk is only six point four feet wide there anyway. It would be pretty narrow with a tree pit. I'm gonna move on to the next drawing, which is the grading utility plan, and you can see that we are proposing a dry well in the rear yard, this property is less than five thousand square feet, it, it meets the definition of the, the, the new regulations, this is a minor development, not a major development, and this dry well provides the, the detention, that's required, the water storage and recharge, that's required to meet the minor site plan requirements. The overflow for that dry well will pass under the floor slab and connect with the the sanitary line that comes out of the building, and they will connect to the main on Myrtle Ave. Water also connects it to the main on Myrtle Ave, and telephone and electric will come off utility pole that's existing at the intersection of, of Myrtle, just, just on the northeast side of that corner. And you, I mean, he's really, there isn't much to the site, it's very small, like I said, so unless you have questions, uh, that's the end of my presentation.
I have no further questions for Mr. Chisvet. Chairman, I don't know, I know the board's preference is usually to wait until all the testimonies in and then questions.
Yep, so Mr. Chisvet, we may have questions, but we don't at this moment.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, I'll call my next witness, Richard Garber from Grow Architects, please.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And just state and spell your name for the record?
It's Richard Garber, G A R B E R.
Thank you.
And, uh, go ahead, Chairman.
He's your witness, but fine, Mr. Garber, you've been before the board many times. As long as your license is current in the state of New Jersey, we accept your qualifications.
It is current, Chairman, thank you.
Great.
I was gonna ask.
Rich, if you would.
Sure, Bridget, I'm sorry.
Thanks, you're a little far away from your mind.
I'll come in then, how's that? So, um, okay, can everyone see, uh, the screen?
Yes.
Okay, great, so thirty-four Randolph, I, with this project, we, we had several iterations that have, that we've, we've thought about on this site, it is a corner site, and we are, we, we do believe that its current iteration, which is basically a two-family in the R one, makes the most sense. And, um, as Gerard said, uh, because of the size of this building, uh, where the, the, the reason why we're before the board is as a corner site, um, the building is sitting on the site in a more urban way, and that is, you know, uh, suggesting we wouldn't comply with the, uh, with, with the prescribed setbacks in the R one, and we'll go through that. This is a three.
Rich, if I may stop you, I'm sorry, I apologize. We didn't submit this, this is not part of our package, so I would just ask if we could mark this into evidence as a two. And I will get this to Lindsay this evening.
Sure.
And, and just give me, um, just state what it is, please.
Okay. PowerPoint presentation, uh, consistent with the zoning documents submitted.
Thank you.
Okay, so three-D view of the building, we're gonna talk a little bit more about this as, as we move forward. Basically, the site is a corner site at Randolph and, um, and Myrtle Ave. And so this is just west of Garfield, everyone knows Garfield, and you can see Berry Lane Park is actually nearby uh, on the, on the east side of Garfield here. This is a vacant site, um, the history of this site is interesting, and you can see it, uh, here outlined in red. This was, uh, up until the demolition of the building that was there, and we're not quite sure when that happened, a twenty-seven-room boarding house. So, um, I am happy to, uh, to, to state here that we are proposing a building that is far more in compliance with the R one zone, and again, we're just gonna ask for relief on, um, on a couple of, of coverage setbacks, basically because of the corner site. Here is the corner site, there is a multi-family just to the right of us, you see? And this gives a, a better view of the, the multi-family that I, I just spoke about, which is directly south of us. So, so we are adjacent to this little fence that you see here. And then there is a, um, a, a, a cute little, however, you know, vacant house that exists down Myrtle, uh, down Myrtle directly west of us, and that's the photo right here. So it's a, it's a varied context, uh, in terms of, um, in terms of, uh, both multi-family and one and two-family, uh, in the adjacent area. Now, um, in terms of the variances that we're requesting here, these are two C variances. Uh, one is for the minimum front yard setback, which is, uh, match the primary building facade on either side of the subject parcel. That amounts to one foot six inches on Randolph and about a half inch on Myrtle. And, excuse me, eight and a half inches on Myrtle. And so we are proposing something that holds the corner a little bit more proper, and so what we're proposing is about five and five-eighths on Randolph and three and seven-eighths on Myrtle, so in effect, we're, we're holding the corner as a, as a, uh, an urban house should uh, in this context. And then the rear yard setback, rear yard shall be added to the front yard for a total of thirty-five feet, minimum twenty feet permitted. That's really written in the R one for a mid-block site, right, where you just take the, the front and back and add them together. Because we're a corner, um, and Mark touched on this in his presentation, we actually have a rear, um, a rear corner setback, uh, which varies, uh, and I'll, I'll show a site plan next with some dimensions on that to, uh, to get into that. What we're proposing here, as you saw from my axonometric, is a three-story building, uh, thirty feet eight inches. Uh, it is a two-family residential building, um, proposed rear yard, which Mark pointed to, and I'll show again, is for the, the lower unit. The lower unit, unit one, is a two-story building, and there's two stories for unit two as well, so it's a kind of L-shaped section, so we actually get one and a half stories for each unit within, um, the three-story, and I'll show a section. Uh, this is our proposed site plan showing, um, access, so unit two enters off of, um, off of Randolph. Unit one is proposed here with a stair, uh, and then you see this nice large rear yard. So our yard depth here is, um, about thirty-nine feet five inches, and then twenty-one feet this way. So we have a rear corner that is, uh, just about forty feet by over twenty feet, or eight hundred square feet of, of, of setback, or, you know, in this case of, uh, an outdoor area that is accessible for the rear unit. And so we think that that's actually quite suitable, what we are doing is we are proposing at the building line here, a three-foot, one-inch setback, which is standard in the R one, and then on the side here on, uh, Myrtle, a two-foot setback. So in, in certain portions of the building, we are meeting the, you know, the, the prescribed setback requirements, but because it's a corner, we're holding, we're holding the building a little bit more, um, appropriately, in my opinion, um, for the corner. Entry is, uh, here. And in terms of what this looks like, uh, the ground floor is primarily the first unit, this is the second unit is, so you enter the building here on Randolph, you have a stair that goes directly up to the second floor, and then you have a, a second stair here that is part of unit one, and that's how you get to that, that split unit, and then you see that great big rear yard here, which is, um, partially, um, a deck, uh, which we're showing here, and partially that kind of planted garden buffer that we talk about, uh, here. And again, you can see that our total width is uh, about thirty-nine feet five inches this way, and about twenty-one feet ten inches, uh, in this direction, and here is our access to that deck. The second floor goes up, we have a nice double height space here that is seen, so you would see the first floor, floor below, and then we have two bedrooms and a bathroom, as well as a kind of, um, sort of den-type space, a, a, a kind of flux space, if you will, for that, um, ground floor unit. And then here, we have a, uh, what we're calling, um, a media room, or actually, this is a master bedroom, excuse me, for the, uh, the second, the second, uh, unit above. And then when we go up, we, you actually see how that unit, uh, lays out, so we have two bedrooms in the front, and then a nice big living area in the rear. We're showing here, um, just a composite roof, uh, we do have a stair with roof access, but at this point, no deck is planned. Um, we're just showing some mechanically screened equipment, um, to be, to be determined, uh, there shouldn't be that much, because it's only two dwelling units. In terms of the facade, we actually have a, a, a cementous, a cementitious, excuse me, fiber panel laid vertically in two colors, so we have, um, a color called tufa and a color called magma. Uh, magma is the more orange one, tufa is the more brown one, and it's just in a kind of playful, uh, playful, uh, pattern that I think also allows us to do these really great tall casement windows. Uh, no double hungs, uh, on any kind of frontage of the building. And as you see, we, um, we move up, um, through the building, we have a steel parapet railing. Uh, this is the elevation from, um, Randolph, so this is our entry door here, you do see there is a change in grade. Uh, there's just a kind of natural slope to the site that I think, uh, Mark spoke to a little bit. The rear, uh, the rear elevation of the building, so this is facing north, um, past Myrtle, so this is that area where we have our, um, our deck space, and then, um, the, the side elevation here, which you see, uh, just a kind of stucco finish, fairly straightforward, and then this is the section that I wanted to show you, just so the board understands. So it's a three-story building, but what we're really doing is we're dividing this, so what you're seeing here with the mouse, this kind of sort of horizontal L shape, that's the double height space for unit one, right? And so what we're able to do is we're able to split this, fire rate this, et cetera, but each of the units here actually has, you know, technically, two floors from a code point of view. And we think that that's nice, that gives a little bit more privacy, um, and, and so forth, and in terms of the units, so we think it's a, a really nice project. Another section, and then my last image is the rear yard, just so you get a sense of that sort of rear setback that we spoke about and that patio and planted area. And that's it, we think this is, um, a really nice, uh, small project, it's taking up a corner that, that there's, there's nothing on. Uh, and we think it makes, uh, it makes, makes sense, and we'll be a good neighbor, so that's my presentation, and thank you.
I have nothing further from Mr. Garber, uh, hold all questions, and I could call my next witness, Catherine Gregory.
Hi Catherine, raise your right hand, you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
That's what I do.
And just say and spell your name for the record?
Catherine Gregory, that's K A T H R Y N, last name Gregory, G R E G O R Y. My business address is ninety-six Inwood Plaza, number, number two fifty in Fort Worth.
I, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble understanding you clearly, is anybody else? It sounds very muffled.
So do I.
Yeah, you had said my business address is ninety-six Inwood Plaza, and then what did you say?
Inwood Plaza, number three fifty in Fort Worth.
Yeah, you are muffled.
Do you have a pair of headphones? Or do you have another?
I'm straining to hear, and I need to hear the testimony clearly.
Yeah, and, uh, do you have an extra phone that you can call in? So we could have your video on and mute this device, and then you would just, your audio would come through the other device? See. All right, I can give you the number when you're ready. All right, uh, it's nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine. And it'll prompt you for the webinar ID, so just let me know, and I'll read that off when you're ready.
Okay.
All right, it's eight six eight two three nine five.
Hold, hold on.
Yep.
Okay, so, start over.
The ID is eight six eight.
You keep talking to me, I haven't heard my good, so, you start this, I'm sorry. Never mind, I'm gonna have to give it to you on Friday. Meeting ID?
Eight six eight two three nine five nine one two two. nine one two two.
You know, Mr. Pizzillo, you jinxed us.
Catherine, just so you have it, so you're not relying on me reading it off, I'm going to email you the call-in and the ID, just so you have to refer to, have it to refer to.
Catherine, her last four digits, one, one, eight, five? Okay, so she, it looks like she's an attendee, Lindsay, she's on.
Oh, it's one, one, eight, five, okay. We should be able to hear you through that phone now.
Okay, can you hear me?
All right, I muted that. I don't know why it'd be echoing.
Is your computer laptop also muted, Catherine? Not just the Zoom?
If, if you hit mute on the laptop, then you're much less likely to get.
Oh.
You almost, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner. It's not just a matter of hitting mute on Zoom on your laptop. You also have to turn the volume that you hear from your laptop, like turn the volume, the output on your laptop, if that makes sense. That's what's echoing. So I'm going to unmute your phone again. So as long as your volume on your laptop is turned all the way down as well, it should be fine. So you might have to dial star six on your phone to unmute, but I did just hit the button to ask you to unmute.
Okay, how about now?
Perfect.
Yes. Now I forget, did I screw you in? I did, okay.
Okay.
Well, that's where, that's where we went awry. Sorry, this is the first time that's ever happened on my computer. I've been doing Zoom calls for the last two years. So I'm not sure what happened. But anyway, hi, everyone. All right, we're back. And I think I was sworn, I was trying to give my address, if you recall. So I don't know if the court reporter still needs my address.
Bridget, did you?
No, I have, I have that, thank you.
Okay, okay.
And Ms. Gregory, we accept your qualifications as an expert.
Thank you.
So Catherine, you prepared a statement of principal points as part of this application. I would just ask you, please, explain to the board the proofs and the justifications necessary for the variances that we're requesting this evening.
Yes. Obviously, as was explained by our prior witnesses, we are here seeking two C variances or both variances and associated with this application for thirty-four Randolph Ave. In the case of the C variance, as you well know, there's two types. There's the C1, which is in cases of hardship, which has to do with some irregularity pertaining to the lot. And also, a C2 variances is where the purposes of zoning are advanced and the benefits outweigh the detriment. I would say that we actually have both a C1 and a C2 in this particular instance. Let me go through the variances for you. The front yard setback, as our architect described, we are required to have one foot six inches on Randolph, and we are proposing five inches, five, five, and five eighths inches, excuse me. And on Myrtle, we're required to have eight and a half inches, and we are proposing three and seven eighths inches. In terms of the front plus rear yard setback, thirty-five feet is required, and twenty feet dash ten inches is proposed, but that is actually in the shorter direction. So I would say that the justification for the variances are, it was stated already, is the lot is slightly undersized, number one. And then number two, you can see that we have a very irregular lot. I believe that the engineer called it trapezoidal in nature. And you can see that none of the sides are equal. So therefore, I think that that really goes to the variances. We're talking about reduced front yards to accentuate the corner and make an architectural statement, which is very typical in an urban setting. And just as well, when you look at the deficiency in the front plus the rear yard, because we have a corner lot, we're encumbered by like two front yards and two rear yards. So since Myrtle actually has the shorter depth, that's where we're seeking the variance, but we're not seeking that variance when we're talking about off of Randolph. So I do believe that they are justified, excuse me, justified. But in terms of the criteria, I believe that we meet the positive criteria, where we promote the purposes of the municipal land use law. Most notably would be Purpose A, which talks about promotion of the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And as you've probably heard me say before, in terms of that, there is a case called Ann Fusco versus Sealy, which found that promotion of a state policy was found to promote the general welfare. And the reason that I say that is because Jersey City isn't planning Area One, where basically the, the tenant is to promote development and redevelopment in areas with its existing infrastructure, which does include roads, sewer, water, et cetera. We also promote Purpose E, which is the establishment of appropriate population densities. As was stated by our architect prior, we, there was apparently a twenty-seven room boarding house on the site. And we are now proposing a two-family, which is actually permitted in the zone. So we are promoting appropriate population density. And I also believe we promote Purpose I, which talks about a desirable visual environment. We are going to make a statement at this corner while providing a permitted use. So I do believe that the architecture is aesthetically pleasing, and will accentuate that corner as, as we stated earlier. In terms of the negative criteria, I don't believe there's any substantial detriment to the public good. I believe that there's also no substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. I believe that we meet the intent of the district, which is to accommodate existing housing and encourage compatible infill development with one and two-family homes that preserve the streetscape, utilize on-street parking where frontages are narrow, and maintain the low-rise character of the area. So with that said, I think we meet both the positive and the negative criteria for the variances that we're posing and associated with the application for thirty-four Randolph.
Thank you, Catherine. I have no further questions, Chairman. We can open it up to board questions on any of the witnesses.
Thank you. Do any of the, does anyone from the board have any questions at this time? Was there any consideration to having a, a green roof or any other green elements in the project?
I think that's a question for Richard.
Sure. You know, there's certainly some, there, there's, there's certainly, Mr. Chairman, some, some space on that roof for that. I mean, we'd be happy to explore that with the, the client. As I said, this, this project has gone through multiple iterations, you know, of, of various sort of building types. And I think at this point, you know, the idea was to try to, to be pretty straightforward with the R1, you know, to the extent that, that we could. We, we can certainly, you know, we can certainly look at doing a small, a small green roof. I, I think would not be, not be a happy list for us if, if that would, if that would help the application, for sure. Okay. Any other questions, comments from the board at this time?
No, I, I actually, I like that suggestion, Josh, because it would also just compensate for, you know, the, the loss of some of the buffering in the back. So I, I would be in favor of that addition, but I like the project.
Anyone else? Okay, anyone from the public? Lindsay?
If anyone here has any questions or comments about thirty-four Randolph Avenue, you can click raise hand towards the bottom of your screen or dial star nine if you're calling in. And this is just for thirty-four Randolph. That's the only case we're hearing tonight. But I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, thanks, Lindsay. So we'll close the public portion of this application. Any staff comments?
Just really quickly, as you heard, this isn't a regular lot, it's slightly undersized, corner lot. The proposed two-family home. The, this proposed, the variances are for proposed front and rear yard setback, and those variances are tied to the undersized nature of the lot. It's exceptionally shallow. So it meets the criteria to be granted a C1 variance, as you just heard. And while meeting the criteria to be granted the bulk variances, the front and rear yard variances, the site plan still accommodates a rear yard area, which provides light and air to surrounding properties and provides open space to residents of the proposed building. And to your question, Chairman, about, you know, any green elements of the project, the rear yards, my understanding, does include permeable pavers and a garden area. So there are some green elements to the site design, which I think is, is a positive and speaks to more like the C2 variance criteria. So staff recommends approval with the following conditions. I will read them into the record really quickly, just because I did not prepare a staff report, because this was a very straightforward application. So staff recommended conditions include no change to the site design shall be permitted without consultation with and approval by planning staff. All testimony shall be binding, meaning all testimony given by the applicant and their expert witnesses. And all street trees and landscaping shall be installed in accordance with three forty-five sixty-six of the city's code and the forestry standards. And that's it. And again, staff recommends approval and be happy to answer any questions if commissioners have any.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for staff? And Gerard, are, are those agreeable, acceptable to the app? Can I assume yes?
Yes, they are, Chairman, thank you.
Okay. Okay, if no one has any questions, does anyone want to make a motion?
Chairman, I would make a motion to approve case Z twenty-two zero zero one thirty-four Randolph Avenue with conditions.
And Commissioner Green, do you want to add anything about the green roof element, if viable?
The, that was one of the conditions that what was discussed by the architect. And I think, yes, we could, we could add that along with what Lindsay was saying about the permeable pavers, that's already in there. But potentially, if possible, the roof as well.
Great. Sorry, Gerard?
No, I was going to say, no problem with us. I, I, the condition, I think, just language-wise, and for the record, applicant will work with staff to install and, and show a green roof on signature set plans.
Yeah, that would be acceptable. Yes, thank you.
Anyone want to second the motion?
Second.
And a motion to approve with conditions. Commissioner Cruz?
Hi.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid?
I, also, I would like to talk with Chairman Yurkav and Kate for that. This is a very smart project. I really love the design and having two families home this way, it's, it's fascinating. I really like it so much, and good luck.
Commissioner Donnelly?
Yes, and I, I commend the applicant's team here for just really doing an interesting job with an interesting lot. And I also thank you very much for not trying to squeeze too much in, into that trapezoid. In this neighborhood, which is predominantly R1, we have had many applications before us where they're trying to change the, the neighborhood, in my view. And I really appreciate kind of the effort to, to make this fit, but also to be interesting. So I, I just really like it. So thank you and good luck.
And Chairman Jacobs?
Yes, agree with the sentiments of Commissioners Shadid and Donnelly. Really happy to see something interesting and with, with the rear yard in this location. Great to see. We've certainly, yes, as Commissioner Donnelly said, seen less exemplary projects in, in this neighborhood. And every neighborhood in the city should have excellent projects like this one.
Motion carries, all in favor.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. I appreciate it. I promised Vice Chair Donnelly to keep my mouth shut next time, too.
Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Well, right?
Thank you.
Project, thanks.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate you.
All right, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay. So let's see. There's no resolutions to memorialize, right?
Correct.
Okay, and I don't think there's any, any need for executive session, right?
Correct.
Can we go off the record for a minute?
We close the public and close everything, Lindsay?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think there's at least a motion to close, I guess.
Oh, motion, motion to close.
Second.
It's unanimous.
All in favor.